Okay, we're live. Go ahead.
All right. Hello, everyone. I call the March 9, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Um, I would like to call for the roll call, please. Yes, Chair in for Willard, present. Cameron Mefba, Olive Gallagher. Olive, you're on mute. She was struggling with her mute earlier, but we did hear you for a hot second. Oh, she said, I can read lips. She says, I can't get it off. Note for the record that Commissioner Gallagher is present.
Are you able to...
Ron Heberlein.
Trying.
Brianna Sinski.
Here, I'm here.
Thank you. Erin Woods.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you. All right, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Waiting for the flag.
Pushing buttons.
There we go. I pledge allegiance...
Pledge allegiance. To the flag...
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. I didn't even bring my back.
All right, so we are at the part of our meeting where we call for citizen input. Um, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. And we do not have a public hearing tonight, so any subject not on our agenda. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here, present physically in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Do we have any audience members on?
We do. Uh, so I was giving them a moment to raise their hand if they so chose.
We do not have anyone present at City Hall, so we're just waiting to see if anyone in the Zoom webinar raises their hand or sends a message.
And we're not seeing any raised hands or messages.
No public comment at this time.
All right, well, moving right along then. Um, the February 9 meeting minutes were part of our package. Um, they were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to these minutes? I'm not seeing any. Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. All right. So now I think we're ready to move on to the next agenda item very quickly in our meeting. I'm a very efficient chair. For future reference.
Duly noted. Do you want to announce the agenda item that we're on?
Oh, yes, I can do that. Excuse me, I had my other computer open. I know it's the Beckman Creek project, but the official title and number I don't have in front of me, so if, um, if you can help me out with that, that'd be great.
That's okay, that's fine. I think it's just a work session for the Beckman Corridor project. So, um, I can go ahead and introduce that. Uh, so I'm Miranda Bates Shell, Planning Director, City of Wilsonville, uh, and I'd be happy to introduce this project. Um, the city engineer will be here to provide details about the Beckman Corridor, um, and upcoming, uh, construction activity, uh, for improvements on that corridor. I just want to do a quick, uh, kind of, um, reminder, I guess, um, of this project, um, and, um, that, that a lot of work and thought has been going into this project for a number of years, um, particularly as we were working on the Frog Pond area planning, um, and master planning for West. Um, and then just looking at that corridor and how it will serve areas that, that grow on that side of the city and existing kind of safety issues and design concerns that we've had for a while. Um, and so this is a really important project for the city, uh, in relationship just to overall use and, um, upgrading it, um, for, um, the community, uh, as a whole. Um, and then also for our growth on the west side, or excuse me, east side of the city. I can tell directional standards. Um, so, uh, there's kind of some, there's history to the project there, but also a lot of work that's been done since the last time you've seen it. Uh, and so the team is here to walk you through that. Um, so with that, I will hand it over to Zach Weigle, City Engineer, and he'll introduce the team who is with him this evening.
Thank you, Miranda. Uh, yeah, again, my name is Zach Weigle, the Wilsonville City Engineer, and, uh, glad to be here tonight, uh, Planning Commission, to, uh, talk about the Beckman Road Corridor project. With me tonight is Nancy Crushhour. She's a project manager, uh, for the city for this project. And also is, uh, Eric Levison, who is, um, with Murray Smith and is part of our, um, um, owner's representative team. And Tammy McEnroe, who is, uh, with Barney and Worth and is, uh, the public involvement lead for the project. Um, so Nancy's going to give a, uh, overview of the, or history and next steps for the project, give you a background on the project. And then, um, Eric and Tammy are available to answer any questions that you have. As we give the presentation tonight, uh, we have a few, uh, questions for you, some feedback that we'd like to get. And, um, so as you hear the presentation, uh, keep in mind, uh, what are the things that the design team or the, the project management team tonight that you see before you tonight can, uh, keep in mind as we move through design and construction of this project? And then what are some of the public engagement ideas that you have that, uh, will help generate excitement around this project as we move forward? So with that, uh, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Nancy.
Good evening, good evening, Planning Commission, um, and Commission Chair. It's been a while since I've seen some of you, and then I look, it looks like there's some new planning commissioners too, so, uh, it's great to see you all. Um, as Miranda and Zach said, we're here to give you an update on the Beckman Road Corridor project. Um, this project has indeed been, uh, in the making for quite a long time. I think, um, changing the Beckman dip into a flatter road has been in the transportation system plan probably since the 2000 aughts, maybe around '08 or so. And now we've made a ton of progress, um, to prepare for our, uh, new Frog Pond neighborhoods and also to, um, deliver this project, um, so that we have a complete corridor, a complete east-west corridor for the city of Wilsonville, um, between all the way from Villebois out to Stafford Road. Next slide, please, Zach. The quarter, what started as the Beckman Dip project, um, has, we've, we've pretty much, um, joined it with three other major capital improvement projects for the city. Um, there is the Dip project, which you see as number four on the, or actually it's number one, towards the left of the drawing. And then, um, for that project, we've determined that we will be building a bridge that will be higher and at a flatter, um, flatter grade than the existing dip. Um, it will also be designed to provide fish passage. We'll be able to improve the creek corridor through there by removing a culvert. And, um, as per our transportation system plan, a regional trail is intended to go up and down Beckman Creek, all the way from Memorial Park into the Frog Pond West neighborhood. In addition to that, we want the bridge to provide wildlife passage. Um, as you know, the, the Beckman Creek Corridor does support wildlife, and we're trying to avoid having, um, having it killed as it crosses the road, uh, or injured. And then, of course, part of the bridge project then too is because we'll have a regional trail and there's a sewer line that goes down Beckman Creek. We also want to provide, um, access to that sewer line and to the trail for public works and parks maintenance. The second major project is a sanitary sewer project. And right now, there is no sewer line in Beckman Road between Beckman Creek and Stafford Road. And a sewer, uh, is needed there to serve the Frog Pond neighborhood. And, um, with, with the installation of a new sewer line here, we'll be able to eliminate some temporary connections that were, that were installed to serve the, um, development that's already occurred out there, including the, um, new middle school to the east. The third project is to improve Beckman Road between Canyon Creek and Stafford. As probably most of you, uh, know, there are some parts of Beckman Road there that are wide and include sidewalks. Um, there is very little bicycle facilities along the route, and the sidewalks are incomplete. So with this project, um, Beckman Road will be built out as a complete street. It will serve all modes of transportation and all, um, users. The, um, the cross-section we're using initially for this project is one that was adopted in the Frog Pond Master Plan. And, um, I want to stress that this is a minor arterial for the city in our transportation plan, and it's a critical connection, not only as an east-west corridor, as you know, there's only three of them in Wilsonville, one down by Wilsonville Road crossing I-5, Ellexen crossing I-5, and then Beckman Road crossing I-5. So it's critical for connecting the city and also providing access to the Frog Pond neighborhoods. Um, there will be a new primary school that's constructed. As you can see, it's shown in the map. And, um, this is an important connection to businesses, um, to the west, and, um, there's also a middle school to the east. So safe routes to schools will be a component considered when we design the new road. And then fourth, there is an intersection improvement that is also identified in the transportation system plan, and that's at Canyon Creek and Beckman Road. The TSP currently calls for a traffic signal to be constructed there. Uh, we're also looking at a roundabout. Um, right now, there's poor sight distance if you're heading west, um, through Beckman Dip. Uh, when you get to Canyon Creek Road, because of the steepness of the slope, you really don't have good visibility for cars stopped at that four-way, existing four-way stop. So all of this will help improve that intersection for safety as well as level of service. Right now, it, um, it's showing as failing in the near future, particularly as traffic grows throughout Wilsonville. Next slide, Zach. The, um, the Beckman Dip Bridge is needed because, as you can see on the photo on your right, um, there's a sort of a remnant, a rural road stuck right in the middle of Wilsonville, or remaining in Wilsonville. And the grades are very steep, um, it's very narrow, it lacks sidewalks on the north side, there are no bike lanes. And it, um, it really is, um, doesn't meet any of our, uh, Wilsonville Public Works standards for a minor arterial. What we discovered as we moved along is currently the dip goes over the Beckman Creek, of course. And there's an existing culvert there that, um, carries Beckman Creek underneath the road. In addition to the culvert, which is shown in the left picture below, the left lower photo shows a flow control structure that was incorporated, um, quite a few years ago now, several decades ago, um, that was installed. When, um, Mentor Graphics was constructed, um, it was determined that the culverts that would normally carry the stormwater from the Mentor Graphics site as well as, uh, some of the sites to the north of that, it was determined that the culverts under I-5 were too small to handle the flows from, um, the developed properties there. So the city installed this flow control structure in order to make sure that these new flows that were going to be, um, diverted to the Beckman Creek Drainage Basin would not, um, would be controlled because they'd be in excess of what the Beckman Creek Drainage Basin would normally, would, would naturally have experienced. So that is a, is a flow control structure that as we build the bridge, we'll be removing the culvert, we'll be removing this flow control structure. And, um, that's a significant part of a lot of the environmental permitting that's going to be, uh, accomplished for this project. As I mentioned earlier, uh, there's also a regional trail segment that will go under the bridge and will provide for wildlife crossing. So with the removal of the culvert and the flow control structure, we will also be able to restore fish passage to the creek in this area and also do a lot of improvements to the actual stream itself. Next slide, Zach. We've done a lot of work. It, in addition to just being in the transportation system plan for a very long time, starting in about 2014, as the Frog Pond Master Plan evolved, we, uh, started to study what this bridge might look like, um, in order to eliminate the dip. And, um, originally, we did a very preliminary engineering study, looking at the link, how long would have to be, how high we'd want it to be, and their various details that we were able to iron out with that original study. And then in 2019, we did, we started to doing a more elaborate study. At that point, we started thinking about, well, let me just step back. A 2014 study envisioned a bridge, um, over the existing culvert. The idea would be to leave the existing culvert in place and then just build a bridge across above it. And, um, as we progressed with our thinking, we started wondering if it would make more sense to get rid of the culvert and to restore the creek to more of its natural, um, natural state. And, um, we also, with those early studies, we realized that there was a, just an amazing oak tree that we didn't want to take down with this project that we wanted to preserve. So gradually, the bridge, um, footprint and some of the details started to be more refined. We did learn in 2020 that, um, fish passage was going to be required by, um, Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, when you touch a culvert, uh, if you're going to improve it, change it, et cetera, you're going to increase, um, if you're going to widen a road over a culvert, you need to, um, provide for fish passage. So at that point, we started realizing we need to either have to replace the culvert or build a bridge so that we could make sure that we could, um, provide for fish passage. As we developed the plans for the bridge, we also, um, looked at constructing, constructing an embankment. It would be a complete alternative to a bridge and just raising the road, um, quite a bit so that, um, we wouldn't build a bridge structure, we would just build this higher road. And of course, with that project, we also needed to replace the culvert for fish, for fish passage. Um, part of the whole study that's happened, that has occurred, we've been looking at detours because during the construction... because during the construction of this bridge project, there'll be significant detour required. And we had our traffic consultants study what that would look like and how that would impact the roads in the vicinity and also throughout Wilsonville, not only for vehicles but also for bikes, walkers, transit, for SMART, et cetera. And then finally, in 1921, we had our consultants come up with what is really the preferred, what is the preferred alternative for this project? What would we recommend to the city council for not only the bridge versus an embankment, but also what kind of detours we would be looking at? We were going to be looking at an onsite detour by building a temporary road, and I'll show you that later, and then also looking at a road closure to build the bridge. What occurred to us as we thought about removing the flow control structure was what happens downstream when we remove these flow controls? So a hydraulic and hydrologic study was started in 2021, and we have just recently completed that study. So we have a better understanding of how the flows in Beckman Creek may change when we remove the flow control. And part of this project then will be to make sure that we mitigate any type of flow changes that occur because of removal of the flow control structure. Next slide, Zach, please. So the following presentation essentially goes, quite briefly summarizes the alternatives that we looked at, which were a bridge versus the embankment. And for each of those alternatives, for like, for the bridge, we looked at an onsite detour versus a full closure. And the same for the embankment, would we want an onsite detour or a full closure? And keep in mind that we had certain project goals in mind, including that regional trail, fish passage, and a big concern of ours would be if we closed the road, what would, what kind of mitigation would we need to undertake to make sure that traffic in other parks of the city was not impacted too greatly? Next slide, Zach. So first of all, I'll talk about the embankment alternative. And these drawings are a little tough to see for you in the slide presentation. However, what you can see from the top drawing is that the footprint of the existing road would be widened significantly. In order to build up this embankment, to raise the road, of course, we have to have retaining walls and slopes that take the soil or embankment material all the way down to the creek channel. And we would be constructing a new culvert, as I mentioned. The black dotted lines show the limits of the fill, the slopes of the fill. And as you can see, it's pretty significant how the footprint is increased from the existing road. The, we want to make sure that we include the wildlife undercrossing and a new pedestrian undercrossing so that we can have our regional trail. And if you look at the, if you look at the drawing in the lower right, you can see where we envisioned the wildlife crossing being, that's kind of that little box on the left. And the new culvert would be kind of down below that to the right. And then there would be a new pedestrian tunnel to the right of that. But we realized that in order to, this pedestrian tunnel to go through this entire embankment would be about 180 feet long. The wildlife tunnel would end up being about 240 feet long. And when we looked at what those tunnels might look like, we all felt like these were not going to be pedestrian or wildlife-friendly whatsoever. It would be very difficult to make that long of a tunnel feel safe, comfortable for pedestrian passage. You know, I really can't speak for wildlife, but they like to have daylight as well. And either way, we felt like these were not good alternatives to achieve those goals of the project. The access for maintenance vehicles was going to be also extremely poor if you use the pedestrian tunnel. There's all kinds of issues that come up with trying to get tractor trucks through there, et cetera. To construct something like this, we realized that to get the environmental permitting for this kind of alternative would be very high risk. There would be fairly high potential that the agencies, the permitting agencies, would not permit something like this, or if they did, mitigation could be very significant. And we also determined that this is going to be a longer construction period than building a bridge. So just that, one little picture down there kind of shows an example of a tunnel. This one, of course, is much shorter than we would need for our pedestrian tunnel, but you can tell that that's not the kind of thing that you want, that you really want to be going into at all. And this, you know, we're envisioning a regional trail here where there's going to be all ages and we want to make sure that it's something that people feel comfortable using. Next slide, Zach. Oh, so we did not recommend that alternative to the city council. Next, we looked at the bridge alternative. And as you can see here, you can get an idea of what the, what it's going to look like in terms of how the structure will be imposed, the footprint will be imposed across Beckman Creek on the top drawing. And then, there is a cross-section of it below that. It shows two trails for wildlife and people. Likely, they won't be next to each other like that, but we were just trying to kind of get a sense of what can we fit underneath this bridge. And then there's also a sewer line that is going to be going under the bridge. It actually exists south of Beckman Road today. And, well, actually, a portion of the sewer has been put in that crosses Beckman Road that just goes up a couple hundred feet up Beckman Road. But we also have to make sure that the sewer line is accommodated underneath the bridge. So again, so what we did recommend and what the city council approved was the bridge alternative because it had the smallest footprint. We could provide stream restoration, the trail should be open, it'd provide much better maintenance access, lower risk permitting, and the shortest construction duration. Next slide, Zach. So I mentioned for both of the alternatives, we also looked at how are we going to get this thing built and what kind of detours are we going to be using for traffic? The first alternative for detour we looked at was the onsite detour. And as you can see from the drawing on the left, what we'd be building is, we'd be widening the existing Beckman Road to the north to basically create a new two-lane road with some minimal pedestrian sidewalk. This would be just a temporary road, we'd end up taking it out later. So we did not, we concluded that we would not recommend this to the city council because we envisioned some really significant construction safety concerns. You can imagine if you've got some big cranes, large construction equipment down there working on this new road, which you notice is quite elevated from the existing Beckman Road, that's not floating. That's an image of what the, where the road will be later. And just having all these conflicts between heavy equipment and our roadway users, we didn't think that would be a real good idea. This also created another large footprint in the Beckman Creek, right in the, right in the actual creek. And of course, we'd extend the culvert through there temporarily to, while the bridge was being built. But it's, again, it's just more impact to the natural environment. This was going to add additional construction time to the project. It was going to cost more. We didn't see any long-term benefit for this kind of a road. And then, it was also going to take out some nice trees on the properties to the north. And plus, it was going to impact another private property to the north, which we feel like is important to consider as we evaluate this alternative. So we did not recommend this to the city council. Next slide, Zach. So the detour was what we did recommend to, I'm sorry, the detour with a full road closure. And it's something that we were very, very concerned about. Closing the road for the duration of the bridge construction could mean a 15-month road closure.
Oh, boy.
And, yeah, oh, boy. So we, one of the first things we wanted to do with that was to study the traffic impact, the patterns, and how it was going to impact all the surrounding roads. We discovered that we'll need to install a temporary traffic signal at 65 Stafford and Ellison. Those that have traveled through that area know that today it has all kinds of problems, lots of congestion, it's got safety issues. And for us to be even temporarily putting more traffic in that area does require a temporary traffic signal to help control the traffic movements through those two intersections. Then, we also had our consultant look at what does this mean for traffic times, what kind of routes are people going to take to get where they want to go inside and outside of Wilsonville? And we looked at, we looked at it for vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, and also we're considering, what does this mean for emergency services, ambulance, fire, police, and also for SMARTs? So we have all that information. There are some, people will experience delays. And so what's so important about this is that the delays didn't look so great when you really think about which way you'd go if you were just trying to cross Beckman Dip. I'm not going to go into all that right now. However, if you think about it, you can imagine, well, I might take this way and it might take me longer, but maybe not that long. But anyway, we did do some modeling and what we realized, what's most important for this is if we're going to close the road and we're going to know that it's going to impact how people travel and how it might add a minute or two to their trip, we need to start telling the people about it earlier, 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 not later, 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 so that people can plan. If one has an opportunity to plan for changes in their schedule, it makes all the difference in the world versus, oh, in a week, we're going to change your traffic pattern and deal with it. So what we realized is the public information campaign is going to have to be really significant. The other thing about whenever you do detours, we have neighborhoods on, particularly if you're looking at the east side of Beckman Creek, there's existing neighborhoods and the Meadows Neighborhood and Arbor Crossing, I think. And then there's all the Frog Pond neighborhoods. So we want to make sure that people aren't just using those local streets. So we need to look at how do we mitigate neighborhood traffic and make sure people are staying on the arterial system. And then, of course, of utmost importance too, will be working with emergency services, the school district, SMART, and SMART to make sure that they are prepared to deal with a road closure and that they can, they can plan for it as well. The one thing I wanted to note here is that the road closure only pertains to the bridge construction. There will be temporary traffic control measures taken as we build the sewer line, which I talked about in the very first slide. And then to build, to reconstruct Beckman Road between the creek and Stafford, there will be lane closures, et cetera. And in order to improve the intersection at Canyon Creek and Beckman Road, we don't know exactly what the traffic control is going to look like, but of course, we need to make sure we have something in place so that people can get around through that intersection as well. Next slide, Zach. So we put together this chart that summarizes the alternatives we looked at, the bridge versus embankment, you see on the left. And then for each of those alternatives, the onsite detour versus the road closure, I don't want to go through all the detail that's shown through this chart. But what's outlined in green is what we recommended to the city council and is what they approved, which in summary, we showed that the cost is not the lowest, but it's not the highest. The construction duration is for sure the shortest for the bridge. I want to make sure that I make it clear too that this does not include all the sewer construction and the road construction to the east. This is just the construction duration for the bridge. The closure duration was not the shortest with an onsite detour, the actual road closure could be shorter. Even, even if you had the onsite detour, there are still portions of the bridge construction that would require complete full road closure. So there was no options we had that would not require some sort of full road closure. But I do want to note in terms of the right-of-way acquisition, which is the second column from the right, that this bridge alternative with the road closure does result in the least amount of right-of-way acquisition the city needs to do, which is a positive thing. And then the environmental risk with this option was by far the lowest. We feel like we can get permits for this nature, for this kind of an alternative. And then just to summarize again, the city council approved this, recognizing that there were benefits to neighboring properties, the permitting for the creek restoration, the shortest construction duration. This alternative achieves the goals of maintenance access, regional trail, and wildlife passage, and fish passage, of course. Next slide, Zach. And if anyone has questions, I guess, we do have a slide for questions at the end. So maybe since I'm almost finished, we can just wait till then.
No problem.
So we have then the budget, which is a really important thing for the city, clearly. We've spent a lot of effort putting together the funding for this project. It's, as it's noted in your packet tonight, the staff report summarizes the funding a little bit in more detail. But we did have to amend one of the city's urban renewal plans to increase the maximum indebtedness so that we could help, that it could help build the bridge. And so, Urban Renewal is paying for the majority of the bridge construction. And then various funds are going into the Beckman Road improvements. As noted, the bridge is about 21 million, the road improvements are about five. The signal, which we're also looking at a roundabout, we're looking at both of those options for the Canyon Creek-Beckman intersection. And that's going to be, we don't have a roundabout cost yet, but it's probably in the million to $2 million range. And then, the sewer line is about $840,000. And all this is about a $28 million project, which is a big, big project. And recognize that it's actually, recognizing that it's actually four projects in one. Next slide, Zach. So in, in, we have these four big capital improvement projects to do, and we And we want to get them done as efficiently as possible. We have new neighborhoods, we have existing neighborhoods, we have pass-through traffic in Wilsonville. And, um, you know, we thought about how are we going to deliver these four projects? And we determined that it would really be best if we could deliver them all in one project rather than doing them consecutively. Um, and in order to deliver them all in one project, um, or to develop them at the same time, to deliver them at the same time, we didn't really want to have four contractors and four design engineers, et cetera. One, you know, one for each project. So we looked at using an alternative project delivery method, which is called progressive design-build. And, um, it's different than the city has used in the past. So we are proceeding very carefully with this alternative project delivery. We've been working with the city attorney a lot and also with other cities that have, have already used this delivery method. Uh, but what essentially it does is you can, you select a design-build team, which includes not only the contractor that's going to construct the project, but also, and include, and including then with that, with the contractor, the design team. And in this case, it's going to be a structural engineering team, a civil engineering team, or civil engineers on the team, and environmental, um, engineers, water resource engineers on the team. So, um, and you use, rather than just using low cost or the low bid, we select this, develop this design-build team based on qualifications. And, um, the idea is to then that design-build team works closely with the city to, um, develop the project design and make sure that it's, that all four projects are in alignment with our goals and our funding. The, um, what, rather than, again, having this low bid for either one giant project or for, for individual projects, instead, the design-build team then, um, proposes guaranteed maximum prices for either the whole project, or they may do portions of the project in pieces, depending on how, how they feel like they can get the project done most efficiently. And the city has to approve those guaranteed maximum prices and negotiate them. This alternative delivery method does require special city council authorization with findings to meet the Oregon Revised Statute requirements for public contracting, which we, um, completed that effort in August of this year, last year, sorry, time flies. Uh, and what we're hoping that we'll achieve through this is much better coordination and collaboration between the design engineer and, um, the contractor and the city. We feel like this will enable us for all work together to address constructibility issues and to address risks that the project, um, poses for construction and, um, and how to best put together a good environmental package that the agencies will approve. And we feel like we can get, uh, much better, this is a, this is a project that requires multidisciplinary expertise. And we feel like we can get a team that has that, um, through this qualifications-based selection process, rather than just going low bid for a contractor. We also expect that, um, a lot of the design ideas and construction approaches will be, um, really proposed by the contractor and their engineers. And we expect them to be quite innovative to deliver this, these four projects in the most efficient way possible. And the way I'd just like to put it is we've got four different projects, all these moving parts. We have, we have a sensitive public, we've got issues with traffic control. You know, we're closing this road. It's, we need, we need to make sure that all of this is done very carefully and in a way that, um, we'll have, make sure we have a successful project that the public will, um, recognize as being successful. And so I feel like we've got all these puzzle pieces. And, um, the contractor is going to be proposing, how do we put all these puzzle pieces together and, um, get things done as quickly as possible? It'll still take, we're still not expecting the project to be done until December of 2024. That's bearing an unforeseen. Um, but we might see small packages, like we might see the sewer line go in first or parts of the sewer line, or we're, we're, we're going to, we're very excited about, um, working with the contractor and their designers to see what they can, see what they can do for the city. And, um, the goals again are summarized on the left, the lower left there in those bullets. I don't think we need to review those again. Um, but we are hoping that this project will, um, meet future travel demands. We all know that, um, with the new Frog Pond neighborhoods, we will see more traffic with the new primary school out there. We'll see more school buses. Um, we want to, we want to make Beckman Creek, um, as, um, as healthy of a stream as we can in the future for, um, not only the fish, but also to preserve wildlife, um, within the corridor. And of course, um, the budget is really important and we want to stay within budget. And then another important part of this project is going to be to make sure we keep all of our citizens informed. And that's why we're not completely starting with you. The city council has been well-informed. We've already done some, um, information articles in the Boon's Ferry Messenger. And we have a project website up. And we've been working a lot with many contractors and engineers to get the word out about the project. But now we wanted to make sure we, we, um, gave this presentation to the planning commission so that you guys could become informed, more informed about the project, because we've made a lot of progress on it. And then we want to make sure you stay informed throughout the project. Zach, next slide? So our timeline is, um, gosh, time flies. Because I guess about a year ago, we were giving the city council an update on all these studies we had done. And now here it is already a year later that we're finally getting, um, I'll just follow the timeline here. November 21, um, we hired our owner's representative, that is Murray Smith and Eric Levinson, who's also in this meeting tonight, is our owner's rep. And then also last November, we had a city team kickoff meeting where we had Public Works, SMART, Parks, um, who am I forgetting? I don't think a library was there, but we had all of our internal stakeholders. We had finance there, all of our internal stakeholders, oh, we had the city attorney there, um, were present so that we could give them, you know, we could go through all the project plan that we've done and give them an update. And then they had questions and concerns. And we've been working with them to make sure we can, um, answer their concerns. Uh, and then now, here we are, February through April. We have a, a request for proposals on the street at this moment that, um, will be used to select a progressive design-build contractor team. The proposals are due at the end of March. And then in June, we expect to start design instruction. We're not sure. It kind of depends on what our team, how they propose doing the very, all the very different projects for the, all the different small projects and how they sequence them. And then December 2024 is when we anticipate construction completion. I always emphasize, whenever we put dates out like this, that that's, um, you never know what could happen if, there are always things that come, come up. But that is definitely, uh, I think is a doable goal at this time. And, um, let's see, next slide, Zach. So this is a very complicated slide. And, um, I don't think I really want to go through every single thing on it. But what we're trying to do is show that, um, this, we have incredible benefits from this project. And there's four categories for those benefits. One is improved safety and mobility. And that, um, really has most to do with the transportation system, including safe routes to schools, improved site distance or visibility, um, relieving congestion. And also making sure we can have safe travel for all modes throughout that corridor and all users. There's another component, and that is the protection of wildlife and the environment. I talked a fair amount about that, providing fish passage, wildlife passage. And then, um, we're also part of the project, like we do with all of our projects, um, is to treat the stormwater, um, before it gets just charged into the creek. And, um, the other two components are expanding recreational opportunities and building capacity to support community needs. The recreational opportunities we see will be through that regional trail. We'll be providing one segment of it. And, um, that's a key connection in the overall Beckman Creek Trail. It also, um, creates much, much superior walking and biking opportunities for the community. If you, um, my experience on Beckman Road is that a lot of people use it for walking, jogging, biking, et cetera. And today, it's really a lousy place to get through that dip, even though people still do it. And that one little sidewalk on the south side is, is doing great. However, um, it's not, doesn't meet any of our goals for safe transportation mobility. And then we also make, want to make sure that it's, um, it's, um, accessible for all users. So we want to remove barriers for folks to participate in, in the recreational activities. Um, in terms of capacity, building capacity, we'll have better sewer capacity to support the Frog Pond neighborhood development, pedestrian bike mobility. I really kind of talked about that already. And then, um, this better, better urbanized road will be able to meet, um, community needs well into the future. Next slide, Zach. So as, um, I think Miranda and Zach already mentioned, um, we, not only did we want to bring the planning commission into the fold for this project, but also we would like to get some feedback from you. Um, specifically, what design and construction considerations should we be considering as we move forward? And what public engagement ideas would help generate, generate excitement for the project? Next slide? Thank you. Questions? So we're here, um, Zach is here, we have our public involvement person. Tammy is here tonight, Zach, the city engineer is here. And we're all here to answer any questions you may have. And also, we want to get feedback on those two questions. And maybe Zach, you want to back up and put those two back on the screen? Or you, do as you wish.
I have, I have several questions, Nancy. Thank you, uh, if, if I could, um, ask them now. First off, I'd like you to go back to that very first slide. Yes, thank you. Um, a couple of questions I have on here. The road is, by the way, I live in Wilsonville Meadows, so I travel on this road every day. I know the dip well.
Yeah.
The school that's looking, that will be built in 2024, how is this going to affect that, since it's opening in 2024? And this project is going to be into 2024. Will that not affect that?
Um, we've had meetings with the school district in order to start that coordination right now, Commissioner Woods.
And then it's a district.
Um, we had a meeting with them, I think, about three months ago. And we're, as soon as we get our contractor, our design-build team selected, that'll be something that we'll follow through with continually on the project, because they're also entering into design. They will be constructing in the same timeframe as we're out there. And we want to, um, could there be any efficiencies that the two entities could achieve? How do we stay each other, how do we stay out of each other's way? Um, these are things that we want to work through with the school district. We're hoping that we're done before the school opens, because we don't want our construction activities to be in the way. That's something that we'll be working with our design-build team on to say, hey, it's really important for us to get this done before the school opens. What can you do to make that happen? And, um, that's where we are at today. There's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Uh, the other question I have on this slide is number three, where you say minor arterial street improvements. What does that mean?
That means that, um, what's, what's out there today is two lanes. There's a sidewalk on one side for most of it, most of Beckman Road on the south side. Um, there's bike lanes along portions of it, and there are no bike lanes along portions of it. So our minor arterial standard requires, um, one lane in each direction and a bike facility. It could be a bike lane, it could be a separated bike facility, and also sidewalks on both sides. It also requires that we create some sort of a median or a center turn lane, at inner, the turn lane being at intersections so that cars can get out of the way of the, through traffic, because the minor arterial does have, tends to have heavier traffic than, say, a collector or a local street. And we want to keep that traffic moving. If they need to make a left turn, get them in the left turn lane. Otherwise, we tend, we like to have medians in Wilsonville because we like the look. It creates more shade and trees and more beauty for the, um, for the roadway system.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Woods. Why don't you finish your questions, and then we'll move on to Commissioner Gallagher?
Okay. Um, one of the things that, um, I know there, there's a community that's right across from Frog Pond there. Uh, and I know they will be affected as far as, you know, getting in and out of there. I'm assuming there will be some kind of turn lane there that would allow that, since we only, you, you just described, uh, still it will be two lanes, as it currently is. Uh, but will there be an enhancement for someone coming out of that subdivision there?
Um, we have not completed the, uh, design for the road yet, but we do anticipate, um, making sure that we meet mobility standards for intersections in the city. So, um, that's something that we'll be looking at when, as we go into the, the actual design of the road.
Okay. All right, I'll let someone else speak. I do have some other comments, but I'll let, uh, some of the other commissioners speak right now.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Gallagher, you were, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I had a question too, because I use this road every day too, um, to come from Stafford over to Parkway. Um, is there any consideration being given to if, uh, for instance, that is going to be blocked off and you're coming south on Stafford and normally would turn right into Beckman? Is there any consideration being given to if traffic is directed straight ahead down Wilsonville Road, um, how to control that, that excess traffic? Is it going to be, are people going to try to, you know, cut through? Uh, it could be, it could be very confusing and very difficult for the neighborhoods that line that area to the right if people are trying to get to where they usually go by having to be detoured down southwest Wilsonville Road?
I, I agree, um, completely with you. Yeah, that's, uh, one of the, one of the...
Because 60, by the way, because 65th, forget that, because that is a nightmare.
Yeah.
That's a whole other issue.
Right, I, yeah, we're aware of that. Um, so one of the, you know, really significant challenges of a traffic control program, well, I would say a successful traffic control program, is assuring that the traffic knows where they're supposed to be going.
Exactly.
And, um, so that's, not only is that going to be a consideration as we approve any traffic control, um, plans that the contractor proposes, but it's also going to be a really important part of our public outreach. I mentioned earlier that with this road closure, notifying the public and making sure they are... are aware of what's going to be happening and what changes they may need to consider making.
Right.
I think what we, and this is something that, actually, it might be part of what we're asking you to do tonight, Commissioner Gallagher, and that is, do we start looking at, you know, do we start looking at particular trips that we want to make sure that our citizens know how to go, if you want to go this way, this is what the best detour is going to be, and this is one we know it's going to cut, take you another 45 seconds or two minutes or whatever, and have that really well understood by the public. So any ideas you have on that, we would be loved to hear tonight.
Well, I think, I think it cuts both ways. It's for a motorist like myself who's trying to get home, and now I have to cut down Wilsonville Road and go like the long way, which would normally take me over to Town Loop. It also is to spare the neighborhoods that people will be trying to cut through, which can cause all kinds of problems with children and pets and people out walking and neighborhood traffic. So I do think it's really important to consider both the motorist trying to get somewhere, and also the neighborhoods that might be impacted by excess traffic that's never been there before.
Yeah, okay. And I agree with you, and that's something that we need to really work hard on.
And I also want to compliment all of you for the real concern for the fish and the wildlife, because that makes my heart sing. I have met many a deer on that road that I'm allowed to go across, and it makes me very happy to know that we're going to take care of our wildlife.
Well, one thing that should cut down on, people cutting through neighborhoods, is Beckman Creek is a lot like I-5, and it only has three roads that go over it.
Right. But for people unsuspecting, if they don't know, you know, you know how people are, they'll try to find a faster way.
Yeah, they'll be disappointed. Commissioner Carr, you've got your, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, my questions are wrapped around the progressive design build process. So Nancy, you did say that we've already been in talks with contractors trying to gauge interest. Are we anticipating that it will be a consortium of firms that will build, create this team? Or are we expecting a contractor to have these engineers as part of their own team?
I'm not sure if I quite understand the question, but we expect that the contractors will have consulting firms that potentially either have expertise in the different disciplines that are required for the project, or they will have a number of different consultants, engineering consultants on their team that can deliver the different disciplines. There are some really major, major, major construction firms that do have in-house engineering, and they're welcome to propose on the project. Then, and whether or not, how we view their qualifications will be something that will come out in the proposal review process. But I would also note that maybe Eric, who's on the, is in the meeting, he's on the Zoom, maybe Eric Lovison, do you have anything to add to that? Because you have been talking to the contractors.
Yeah, so the contractors, you may see multidisciplinary from the contractors themselves, a bridge builder and a civil. And they might even bring a specialist that does stream restoration. So you'll see that consortium. And there's a, in the process, some of those, they'll likely do the work, but there'll be other work that they will actually bid out as the design builder to other subcontractors. And so guardrails, signage, those things typically get bid out. And there may be a bid out for like, stream restoration to specialty contractors. They will team then with typically, there's very few contractors that have in-house design that would cover that. There's a few out there, but not very many. So most of them are teaming with firms that we all know and have worked with in the area that have those specially designed bridges, going to be a big one, civil and those pieces. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. So how does this contract language, how is this written? Is it, is it going to be a prime contractor, and then there are subs to the, to the prime, but the prime will be ultimately responsible for delivering the design and the, and the all four projects?
Correct. There will be a prime lead. In theory, a design consultant could be the lead and then partner with contractors. But the ones that I've worked on, and there was three over in Bend that I was the owner's rep on, the design, or the contractor was the prime lead, and then the design team was a sub to them, under their umbrella with sub agreements. There were a few that had what they'll call specialty trade partners or exempted subs that they're suggesting that they want to use, where it's a critical, it's a critical component to do that quick delivery process that they would do.
How is this different than just design build?
Really, the difference is, in a design build, the contractor would be required to really give us a price right up front. They'd meet with their team, they would say, here's what we can do this project for, it's guaranteed. The city has the onus to provide the parameters under which we say, you know, what we want, and then they would deliver that project for that price. And there's very little interaction past that early work with the city saying, here's what we want. Progressive design build really allows for a team environment, where the city contractor, design group get to sit in and work together and work out those issues. So, you know, if you do have some scope issues or things that come up during the project, it's not a change order, which it would be in a, in a design build environment. This, we can integrate it, work through it, understand the cost benefits. Again, it's the ones I've worked with involving all the stakeholders, kind of in those early, early days, Public Works gets a say on how things move. And then the contractor really gets to bring, to bear their contract experience, their design, their design and construction experience in early, to really look for those innovative ways and value engineering ideas that can save some money and time along the project.
So will there be revenue sharing if they deliver early?
No, right now, we do not have any incentives in this. The incentive is to, they get a guaranteed maximum price, they have a design fee for their overhead, and we negotiate that price as we go through. There are certainly examples out there where there are some cost share incentives, but we didn't include those in this project.
Got it. And then any allowing contingencies in the GMP?
Absolutely. There'll be contingencies, and likely there'll be a small owner's contingency for just things that might come along that we want to add as a community. And then contractor could cover their risks that they deal with. And then we also use a thing called allowances, where those are very specific. Contingency is more of a pot of money. Allowances can be very specific to things that we just don't know enough yet, but we can place some money in there and then negotiate that as the design or the need develops.
So you say that you've done some of these projects in Bend? Any of them, the scope, this scope?
All of them this size or bigger, yeah. One was very, very similar, it was Murphy Corridor, Southwest Washington, bridge over the railroad, minor arterial development through existing, and then a new segment that was completed, all of them with roundabouts. I think we put in six roundabouts, and that one was three. And then Empire Corridor was the same, canal crossing, bridge, three roundabouts and upgrades to existing roadways.
Okay. And then your part of this design will be them determining, or the team deciding the order of these projects?
Yeah, the team will decide. In their proposals, we've asked them to give us their schedule and how they see this project moving together. Those things, as Nancy said, can move based on permitting that we'll have to adjust to, because that's out of all of our control. But to that extent, yeah, we will work with them and develop those, and then get our systems ready to do those negotiations for the, for the GMPs as they bring through. You know, this could be one or three GMPs for the project.
And are they, are they aware of the school opening?
Yeah, they've seen all this information. We've had really good outreach with potential teams. They've seen the same maps that you're seeing, where they see potential staging areas, the school and the roadway. Yep.
And do we have an idea of how many RFPs will get returned?
We've had good discussions with five, and so I feel very good that we are going to get at least three. You never know, but people have been engaged to this point, so they've invested themselves. So I hope to see four to five.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
I've got another question to figure out, like on the contracts question, so that might be for you, Mr. Lovison. It's really a comment, actually. With all the risks associated with supply chain constraints right now, it might be worthwhile to consider shared savings, guaranteed max price with shared savings, should they be able to, otherwise you're going to get too much supply chain risk in your pricing potentially. So just something to consider.
Absolutely. And that's, that is one of the things that they, we hope that they identify in their risk assessment and telling us, and then how they're going to deal with that. And so there's, I think there's some ways we can deal with that without cost share. One would be early work packages, where we identify piping, long lead items, where those prices are really volatile right now in the industry, and see if we can secure those up front with a, with a early GMP package, locks that price in, there's, we guarantee that it'll be on time, so we won't see delays in those issues. But absolutely, supply chain right now, and it's going to be an issue for almost any project.
Yeah, absolutely. Before I go back to you, Mr. Commissioner Woods, a technical question I had was, that temporary traffic signal that you said would be put in at Algerson and Stafford and 65th, since we all know about the difficulties of that intersection, is there any thought on making that a permanent traffic signal?
We wish. The Clackamas County has been working really hard at putting together funding to not only advance the design for a permanent solution at that location, but also to secure funding to construct it. And they were trying to, they were applying for funding through some of the federal funding packages that have been coming out, and so far, they have not been successful. The permanent solution for that location could be, oh, I don't even want to say, ten million something, I don't know. It's going to be a significant, there's a creek, obviously, there's elevation, topographic issues there, and having 65th Street so close to Stafford makes it just a terribly awkward situation, where you really want to have more distance between the intersections. So while we are working with both Washington County and Clackamas County to coordinate what this temporary detour signal is going to look like, they, there is a possibility that what we put in now could remain, if it's working, if it's helping.
If reasonably well, yeah.
Yeah, if it's helping, I don't think we can expect this temporary signal to be an end-all, those problems out there at all.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to do is mitigate our additional traffic that we will be producing because of the road closure. But if it helps some, I think the counties might consider leaving it in place as sort of a stopgap.
Good thinking. Commissioner Woods, you have your hand back up? You have a few more questions on the technical?
No. What I wanted to do is, are we ready to move to the questions that you have here at the end?
Well, just, I believe so, but let's make sure that everybody's had a chance to talk. Commissioner Tsitsinski, did you have any comments or questions you wanted to?
No questions yet. I have some stuff I want to talk about with the community outreach, but I can wait for that until later.
So my technical question, the first question that was asked about our feedback, all of mine have been answered through the dialogue. And does anybody else have remaining feedback on, I call it the technical, the first question? Does anybody have any remaining questions on that before we move on to the feedback, the outreach rather?
I don't think I understand what you mean. Are you talking about the question, the two questions in the slide, or?
Yeah, if you could go, Zach, if you could go to the two questions. Perfect. Does anybody have any more feedback on the first question?
The only question or input I have on this is, is there any concerns with, you know, construction materials from an environmental standpoint? I know there will be a lot of dirt and dust kicked up here. The reason why I ask that is when Frog Pond West was being developed, you know, I come out on that Willow Creek Drive, which, you know, dead ends right into Beckman, and it was always a lot of dust and dirt, and believe it or not, it came over into the subdivision there, into the community. So I was wondering, was there any thought or concerns, you know, about that?
Right. We, that is, erosion and sediment control is what you're talking about, Commissioner Woods, and the city has regulations on that. There are times when it's very difficult to control all of the dust, but our contractor will have an erosion and sediment control plan that they are expected to follow. And our inspectors and just themselves should be trying to reduce as much as practicable how much sediment leaves the site, that being either in the form of mud or dust. We cannot ever promise that no dust will be, will come from a construction site, but our intention is to minimize it as much as possible.
Good.
All right. So let's move on to the second question, about what public engagement ideas we would have. So Commissioner Tsitsinski, you've been so patient, I am going to start with you.
Sure. So, I mean, besides obviously doing social media engagement and maybe doing some stuff on that, let's talk Wilsonville website, I'm wondering, there was mentioned earlier about kind of providing like a little map or an infographic or something for detour routes that we could publish and maybe put out either in the Boons Messenger or online, or have it somewhere where someone can have a visual thing to look at and have it stick in their mind that, oh, well, this is going to be closed, so I go here and here and here, and have that, and even, you know, clip it out if they need to, but help to plan for the inevitable. And then my other thought was perhaps contacting some of the HOAs that are in the surrounding neighborhoods, just, a lot of people, sometimes they get the Boons Messenger, maybe they throw it out, or they don't have social media. But that's kind of a more direct way to get into the actual neighborhoods that are going to be around there, that's going to be directly affecting that, so you can kind of blast out to their residents and get it out there a little more broadly.
Yeah. Good. Now, this is Tammy McCruth helping with public outreach, and those are all really good ideas and things that we have thought of as we're developing this plan, so I really appreciate that. Again, trying to make sure, we're really trying to minimize the impact on the public and get information out early and often, so we don't want there to be a bunch of surprises to everybody. So any opportunity, we can communicate with the local neighborhoods, the schools, SMART, the emergency services, all of that, we're really kind of doing a very integrated plan around that, so I appreciate that feedback. That's great.
Yeah, you offer an idea?
Yes.
Well, we're coming into good weather, spring and then summer, and as you know, a lot of people do walk in our neighborhood, and they walk there. And I'm just wondering, especially with some of the walking clubs that we have, like going for lunchtime walks, maybe we could offer a walking tour for the neighborhoods and for people in Wilsonville to come with someone knowledgeable from any of you all, and conduct a walking tour of literally that dip and explain what's going to happen here. Because, you know, you can put it in writing and everything, I mean, I'm a marketing person, you can put it in front of people a lot of times, but if somebody doesn't grab their interest or it becomes real to them, it just goes over their head, especially right now. So it's just a thought.
Yeah, that's great. Again, thank you.
Tammy? Tammy, just to add on to that, I think a more focused approach would be to work with the HOAs. I know there is at least three there in the area. Not have one collective meeting, because that would be too many people, but to reach out to each of the HOAs separately, ask them, you know, hey, let's have a special meeting on this, and then to get their input and have them, or allow them to ask their questions and concerns. Because I can tell you right now, Wilsonville Metals, with the Wilson, I mean, with the Willow Creek Road that we all use today to get to Beckman, that's going to be an issue. And I think we should get out in front of that as quickly as possible and as soon as possible and answer that. And then in addition, of course, ongoing updates. And once again, I would use the HOAs as one avenue to ensure that they're kept up to date because they will be asking the questions. I can tell you already, it's been a question in the Wilsonville Metals HOA.
That's great feedback.
Yes. I would strongly encourage that as soon as possible.
Great. And we are planning to, for example, meet the contractor event and meetings with HOAs and other community organizations in that area. So that's great feedback. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lovison, do you have your hand up? Did you want to reply to some?
Oh, just very quickly. I think, well, Zach might have this already, but if there are contacts in those HOAs that you know of, that might be very helpful for Tammy and I just to make sure we've got the right people to start that conversation. So if I could ask, this is an ask, if you have those contact information, send it to Zach or myself, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I'm one of those contacts you speak to.
Oh, great.
Yay.
Yay. There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
Good. We've got our first, we've got our, we've got one on one. That's great.
Commissioner Carr, you have a comment?
Yeah, mine was, mine was around kind of that town hall concept as well. Not only do I think it's important that we do it early, because a lot of, in talking with my neighbors, and I'm not that close, I'm north of this, this project, but my neighbors are confused as to why the city wants to spend $20 million building a bridge, right? Without understanding the positive outcome of doing this, right? That I can guarantee you, none of my neighbors are thinking about sightlines, right? And that's a very valid point for wanting that. The increased population that's going to be driving down this road, right? We got to make it a tenable road in that case. So the reason for these four projects, sitting on the planning commission makes perfect sense. To the public, it doesn't yet.
Yeah.
And so town halls, I like the idea of doing it through HOAs, but that's only going to affect those HOAs that are closest to it. And because we're all stewards of the city's money, I think we should be telling the citizens, you know, what the positive outputs are, if that's done in a town hall. I also think road signage, the sooner, the sooner and the more, the better. Just to make them aware that there's a project upcoming and it's going to be impacting this area. And I would expect that the road signage would probably be as far back 60, or Stafford Road is before the 65th intersection. Because we know that's going to get that temporary signage, or temporary traffic control. And then my last point was, I think we should have a shovel in the dirt ceremony that's kind of citywide, kind of an invitation to, you know, when you get all the executives around with their gold shovels, right? And make a, make a big deal out of it. Because again, I think it's a, it's an important part of the expansion of the city. So give it lots of press.
All good ideas. One suggestion I might make is, we have trail maps and bike maps that the city publishes. And I don't know the timing of when those would be updated, probably not until the trails are ready. And so I would maybe celebrate that we're going to have more trails, we're going to have more connected bike opportunities. Soon, you know, that way they can know that we've got some more engagement coming, or more opportunities coming. Oh, by the way, you had said something in your presentation about that trail, that regional trail that would go under the bridge. And you used a word, I don't recall what it was, but it made me think that the trail itself may not be part of this project. The trail itself may come later. We're just making accommodations for a potential future trail?
That's correct. We, we hope to build a segment under the bridge. But if it doesn't make sense to do it at this time and rather wait until the alignment is better understood as it goes to the south, we may decide that it's better to wait. Ultimately, there's a section of the trail that's already been constructed in Frog Pond West that this trail will connect to. And we would like to at least connect up to that with this project. But again, not knowing for sure what the alignment to the south will be, we're not absolutely certain what the extent would be for this trail segment under the bridge at this time.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Commissioner Gallagher, you have your hand up, but then you, I don't see you on camera.
Yeah, I'm here. I just, I'm about to sneeze. No, I think you pretty much answered it. I was just thinking that, I agree with you that the sooner we can get out information to the public and make it an exciting thing, guess what's coming, the sooner we could. And I mean, that would even be something very inexpensive, just, you know, like cards that could be left at the supermarkets and stores and on counters. Just letting the public know that something's coming. Because if we prepare people, then we won't get all this outrage when, you know, well, why didn't you tell me? And you know what this is going to do to my commute? You know, I think, I don't think any of those ideas are bad ideas.
Yep. All right. Did we give you enough feedback?
Yeah, that was excellent. Thank you.
All right. Great. Well, thank you very much. Exciting project. And as a construction professional, I'm looking forward to seeing this play out and the contracting strategy as well. All right. Well, thank you all. Let me get back to my agenda here.
And thank you for all for your time tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. All right. So our next agenda item is really just wrapping up the meeting. So the action minutes, the city council action minutes were attached to our packet. Are there any questions over that content at all? Okay. We also have our--
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah.
I had a question, but I did notice that in the March meeting minutes, they were talking about the April meeting potentially in person.
How exciting.
I'm trying to validate that with city.
That is correct. There was discussion on Monday night about having the city, the first April city council meeting in person. So they will be transitioning back to an in-person city council meeting, the first, the first meeting. I can't remember what date that is.
April, April 4th.
April 4th. So that will be the first city council in-person meeting. Staff is meeting internally to discuss a few items about the hybrid model. We have actually been doing the hybrid model, even though you all have not been here. We have been essentially prepared for people both in person and away. It works a lot better when the entire commission or the entire council or the entire board are all present in the same space. So that, rather than half in person and then half on Zoom, it creates kind of weird delays and it's disjointed and it doesn't feel cohesive. So when we move back to in-person, that will be the entire commission. We need to work through a few things here to determine whether we will be going to an April planning commission in person or whether we will wait until May. For those who have been to city hall in the last six months or so, nine months, it's been a while now. You will have noticed that we are undergoing construction due to a plumbing issue. So one of the things that we need to verify is whether that interferes with our meeting nights or making sure we plan ahead with Public Works so that it does not. Because they are doing a lot of the noisy work after hours so that staff has some ability to do their work while they're in the office. So there are just a few things for Dan and I to work with other staff at the city to determine whether we'll be going back to in-person meetings starting in April or whether we'll be starting in May. My sense is it's probably May, just because the first city council will be April 4th. Your meeting is shortly thereafter. It might be nice to make sure that the kinks get worked out and make sure there aren't construction barriers, potentially, literally.
It's kind of messy. It's not a comfortable place because, I mean, we have temporary front desk set up in city hall and city, city council chambers while there's, you know, the plastic and dust outside the door, so.
Yeah. So we'll keep you posted. We will give advance notice. So if, you know, if we were deciding March 30th, we're not, we, or I guess April 5th, we wouldn't just spur that on you that, you know, in six days, you need to meet in person. So we will give you advance notice ahead of time.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. If there aren't any other questions about our work program schedule, then I think we're ready to move for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All right. Well, then I, the planning commission meeting is adjourned at, let's see, 7:35 PM.
Wow.
A record time. It is a record.
Outstanding job, Commissioner Willard.
Nice job, nice job.
It's because I didn't say much.
We will see you all in April.
Sounds great. Have a good evening. Thank you all.